Good morning, everyone. Good morning. It's good to have everyone here this morning. We've got a large agenda and we've got a large crowd of people here today. So we appreciate everyone being in attendance. This is the Thursday, November 2nd Mesa City Council Study Session. I will note that all of our council is present because I see Mr. Summers' smiling face on our Zoom screen. So that means we're all—
I am here, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Just a few things to set the stage for this morning's meetings. We will go over the agenda for Monday's meeting, but Mr. Brady, we also have items—update us on items 2B and 2C and the status of whether or not we'll hear those this morning and how that relates to our planning and zoning.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did not have a quorum this week from planning and zoning, so we were not able to get a lot of the work done that was on their agenda. So that includes the presentation for the city code on the historic preservation. So both of those were 2B and 2C. We're going to ask just to postpone so we can get those through PNZ and then come back to council. And I'm just going to skip even on the specifically on the agenda for Monday. Item 6B, which was the zoning ordinance pertaining to medical marijuana dispensaries, it also did not get a hearing before PNZ. So we don't have a recommendation. We need to get something from PNZ. So we're going to continue that. I don't know—if we decide on a date?
We don't have a date yet.
But we'll deal with that. We'll just say it continued sometime in January—a meeting in January. So I just want to agree with that. And as council goes through the agenda for Monday—I just mentioned the mayor—we would like at some point to bring up Chris Hassert to talk about—I'll give a presentation on 5A.
5A, okay.
Thank you.
So for those who are in attendance this morning—if you're here relative to those agenda items, I apologize. We will—those items are being continued until after they get a hearing at planning and zoning. So that's our agenda item on Monday night of 6B. And then for this meeting, item 2B and 2C related to changes to the historic preservation ordinances. We will not be hearing those items today. So apologize if you came to the meeting and we're not going to talk about what you want to talk about. But back to agenda item one. Council, we do have a staff presentation on the water supply, which is 5A on our Monday's agenda. So we'll hear that presentation from staff. Maybe we should go ahead and do that.
We'll do that.
And then we'll respond to any questions council has for Monday's agenda. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, council. We're just going to bring up—we just have a couple of quick slides for you on this item on our 100-year shared water supply. Okay, Brian, if you want to go first one. So we wanted to start with what it is, just a refresher. We've talked about this in prior presentations, our designation for 100-year shared water supply. It's determined by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, ADWR, per state statute. They're looking at a 100-year horizon and they're considering our current and committed water demands as well as our projected demands. So how we master plan long-term, they're looking at those demands as well. This middle bullet is very important. So the 100-year assured water supply must be deemed—all the water included in that must be deemed physically and legally available, continuously available. And then we have to demonstrate the financial capabilities to access, treat, distribute that water. So we have to be able to show that we can do that financially. A couple other points worth noting—the 100-year assured water supply designation—it's done on a rolling 15-year basis, and we last did that in 2010, so we're coming due again. And then why is it important? So why is it important for Mesa or any other water provider to have 100-year assured water supply? First of all, it's part of the state statute. We have to do it. Also, it's called a modification, and that's the way we phrase it. And that's the way it's described legally. You can think of it as a renewal or an update. Sometimes there's no changes. Now, for us, it's important to note that Mesa added almost 100,000 long-term storage credits, 100,000 acre-feet of long-term storage credits since 2010. We went from essentially 450,000 acre-foot of water stored in the ground to about 550,000 acre-foot. So we definitely want to update our assured water supply designation so that can be reflected and that's recognized that we have access to that much more water in the future. Now, what happens if we fail to do it? Nobody fails to do it because there are serious implications. Our groundwater allocation would be at risk. Other cities could—that water could be pushed out to other cities. We would be restricted in how we develop. And I don't have to tell you how the bond rating agencies would look at a city that fails to get their assured water supply. So there's serious drawbacks. That's why we started this process. Brian and his team with Kathy McDonald started this months and months ago. It's done essentially. It's with our consultant right now who's doing the master plan. They're doing a thorough review for accuracy and completeness. And the reason we're here today is asking for permission—this is a resolution—to give the city manager authority to sign off on the application package. And then the resolution would go as part of that application. That's just the procedure in the state statute. So with that, we'll take any questions.
All right. Thank you. And so this is for action on Monday night?
Correct.
Correct.
And Chris, how long does it take for them to do the review, to come back with a determination?
They're going to spend the pretty much—because it's not just us, it's the other water providers—all of 2024. So you can see that they want it done at the end of this year. They'll take all of next year, and then it'll be official in 2025.
Thank you. Council, any questions on this? Mr. Freeman?
Are we going to be able to see the report that the person provides for us, for the city manager to enter to the agreement?
Are you talking about Councilmember Freeman, the application that we're—
The application process and the analysis given.
Well, so two things. We're going to present—we're bringing to council the water master plan. Is that what we're calling it? Water master plan?
Right.
This month. I think it's—and—
November 30th.
November 30th.
Okay.
So that's a critical part of—the otherwise, it's just an application to the state with—but it has—in order for us to make an application to the state, the council has to agree to it. So is there something in that application that's different than what you showed them a month or so ago, as far as the different water supplies and where it comes from?
Let me ask Brian. What do you think in terms of the application content itself? Is there something maybe that—because the application itself is pretty hefty, right? Is there something that could be disseminated from that, possibly, and distributed?
No. We're here before you today to give the city manager authority to sign off on the application. The application itself, when Chris presents the master plan on the 20th of this month, that's what's included in this application because it shows what our current demands are, what's committed, and the projected demands. And then it looks at our water supplies to ensure that we have adequate water supplies to meet that build-out demand. So what you would see on the presentation on the 20th is exactly what's in this application.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So the analysis and data for everything—
So a month or so ago, you received the water portfolio plan. We'll—but we are scheduled—and it's a pretty cool—I shouldn't say cool, Fermi's cool—master plan with a lot of technology and the-how they really study the capacity of the system, not just where we're getting our water from, but how to distribute that water throughout the system and the age of the piping and all that. So—but we'll be bringing that to you. Maybe not by Monday, but after that, that'll be included in the application.
Yeah, I just think for council's overall analysis of the master plan that we see some analytics for it, data, and then the processes and plans to access that water and allow us to grow and develop.
Yeah, that's—we have that scheduled to bring to council.
Okay.
Right, Mayor, councilmember Freeman. So we've had these series of meetings. As Chris just mentioned, we had that thorough meeting maybe six weeks ago on the water portfolio with the different graphs and projections. And then we're here today to talk about the assured water supply as we get ready to submit that important package. And then on the 30th, we'll be back. We'll have a detailed presentation because this ties in with the general plan. So as other departments are coming in to talk about their department's master plan, as it fits in, enveloped under the general plan, we'll be doing that. So it'll tie all this together on the 30th as well.
Yeah. The good news is we met with rating agencies two weeks ago, and Chris was very much part of that dialogue presentation. And our ratings just came back. And on the utility fund, they've—everything is stable or—what's the other word we use? Stable or—
Stable outlook.
Stable outlook, so it's good. So we're in a good spot. But we'll—yeah, no, we'll bring all this back to council.
Well, I know, as I sit on AMO and listen to the other municipalities having to go through this process, it's extremely important for all our communities to have our water in-line, available for our future and distribution in our system and our residents. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Jen, did you have a question?
Kind of, sort of. So among all the water providers in the—what do you call it? ADWR? Is everybody providing their plants at the same time? Is that how it works? So then there's an overview at the total plan and how it affects?
They try to—right, Mayor, councilmember Duff. They try to keep it in sync because ADWR, they produce a very large, wide-scale hydraulic model so that there's no city or water providers in a silo, right? It's all—we all share the same aquifer and aquifers, and they do a model that makes sure they're not overallocating the aquifer as a whole, that it's being parsed out appropriately.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. It's—this water thing is enormous. I appreciate the work that you do. I think we're in a good position. I—you know, a lot of municipalities, water providers hold the long-term storage credits. And I always think about as shortages arise and such, that more of them will be exercised and how that'll affect our aquifer. But so I'm glad that they're looking at—we don't—do we report how many we plan to exercise or hold or—I know it's kind of our savings account, right?
Councilmember, are you talking about the long-term storage credit?
Yeah.
So Brian, in terms of—if we use those in advance, what does that procedure look like?
Well, part of the designation process is they look at our total volume of long-term storage credits at that time. And then they—they spread it out over the 100 years. So in the designation, if we had, you know, 100, you know, say, long-term storage credits in each given year, it would be one acre-foot that you could withdraw. But it's an average. You could do more in one year and less in another, but over the course of that 100 years, it's an average amount of that.
But I think the question is if we—if we got into a situation where we felt we wanted to start using some of those long-term storage credits, what does that process with—look like with ADWR?
We just do it and report it at the end of the year with our annual report. And we just show how much long-term storage credits that we recovered, and they deduct that from our account along with our other groundwater and surface waters.
It's a good—it—the reason I was a little unfamiliar with it is we've never done it, and I never plan to do it. And because that's our savings account, right? So we don't want it—we just want to keep accumulating those. And right now, we have about—if we were to not use any surface water, any other water, 550,000 acre-foot, that's five and a half years of our total city's water.
I'm glad to hear that we're not planning to exercise it because the water needs are tremendous. And—because I keep on thinking with all the providers and municipalities and the demands for water, how about if they all started exercising their long-term storage credits in a given short period of time and how that would affect our aquifer to the—in the long run? But anyway, a lot of hypothetical situations, but I'm glad that we're not exercising a lot of ours, so thank you.
Thank you, council. Any other questions? Thank you. I hope we get a chance—I—when you said we're going to look at slides, I was—I got a little excited thinking we were going to see that supply-demand chart that takes us out to—
We're back that next slide.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. To me, that chart kind of just visually tells the whole story in one piece of paper. Yeah. Yeah. Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda?
Is that on the city council?
Yes, Monday night's agenda?
Yeah, I have—I just—I just wanted to bring up—let me find that number here. And thanks, management, for 5D approving the IGA with the town of Fountain Hills, providing fire dispatch services for them. Because I know their fire department's moving from a private to municipal fire department, so we appreciate our city looking forward to dispatching for them because we already dispatched for real, very fire department just to the north. So I just wanted to thank management for reaching out and helping the department as they transition to a municipal fire department. So again, thank you.
You bet. Council, anything else on Monday's agenda you'd like to go over? Mr. Summers, anything from your perspective?
Yes, Mayor. Just a comment on 6F, which is DSB. I'd like staff to go back and look at the traffic flow there from what I'm looking at at the site plan. It looks like we're encouraging traffic, truck traffic, to flow onto Ellsworth Road. And I think that's going to be—that's going to create some conflicts, particularly with the soccer fields there and the airport. So if we—if they could look at that and see if we can discourage traffic from flowing in that direction and maybe push them back toward the south side of Signal Bute Road, accessing the freeway at that location, I would appreciate it. But I don't need a presentation from staff or anything. If we could just have them do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Summers.
I do.
Yes, Councilmember Duff.
It's kind of related on 5E. I spoke to Scott briefly yesterday about our natural gas supplies. And I see that this is just extending, you know, our supplies and continuity of what we already do, right? But are we looking at the Magma? The—I know the Magma area, the LG plant is—has tremendous needs for operation, and it's—I don't know if it's being built at this point or it's just speculative or—how is that playing into our gas supply? Are we—
Five minutes, not the whole hour.
Okay.
Okay. Should I even open that can of worms right now?
No, it's a—it's a fair question, and I think just kind of where we're at and kind of maybe the—it's a—maybe just describe the arrangement is going to be a little different than any of our other clients, customers, just because of the volume. Let's just talk about how we're looking at structuring that differently.
Okay. So good morning, Mayor, council, councilmember Duff. Yes, so LG, we are in negotiations with them and continue to negotiate. What we're working on with LG is that they're going to be a transportation customer. And what that means is we're—we've let them know that they need to bring the gas to our system, essentially. So there's a very complex system, as I've learned over the last year, of how gas actually gets from Texas and New Mexico to the city of Mesa. And that system really does have some strains that are on that system. And so the city has rights to—and you'll even see as part of this agenda item, there is a—is it AMA is—help me out with what AMA stands for again.
Excuse me, asset management agreement.
So an asset management agreement, which means that we have a third party who actually manages our rights on the pipelines that bring the gas to the city of Mesa. And there's—there's value to those rights because of that strange system. And so with LG, we're letting them know that they need to be able—because of the quantities of gas that they need, they need to be able to bring that gas to us and deliver it to our gate station. Once it gets to our gate station, then we are capable of delivering that gas and metering that gas to their facility. As far as construction, my understanding, they've done some grading of the site, but no actual construction, so to speak, has begun.
And Scott, on the commodity, though, it wouldn't come under this contract. We're actually—they're going to procure the gas commodity—
Right.
—separately through a very large—I don't know what—what do they describe that? Not a wholesaler, not the right word, but is that—can we use that?
Marketer, wholesaler, those are appropriate terms.
Wholeseller, much larger company who will commit to them the commodity of the gas and be able to guarantee it. Because for us, the quantity was so tremendous that we would be at risk because we'd have to go and acquire lots and lots of the commodity—I'm not going to use the terms. But if something happened where LG went to a different technology or whatever, the risk—we couldn't absorb that commodity throughout the rest of the city. So we've worked out an arrangement with another provider who will—who does this, you know, across the country, may be able to commit the commodity to LG. And so I think that's actually kind of in place. We're now—we're just working on pipeline capacity to get the gas into our system. Is that correct?
That's fair, yeah. I don't know that they've finalized deals on the supply side.
I shouldn't be careful when I'm arguing. But we've entered—there's a—
But they—they have been having conversations with those marketers and those wholesalers. And now what we're doing is both LG, the city of Mesa, and actually the state of Arizona are having conversations with Kinder Morgan about pipeline capacity and how we might be able to identify additional capacity.
So it's their responsibility or their task to come up with the natural gas that they need, kind of like finding it on the market, right?
Correct.
You know, like a long-term storage credit, right? You find it on the market, and then this organization will bring it here. We will be the seller of the natural gas? We will meter it to them?
Yes. So once it reaches our gate station, then it would—it would be a part of our system.
And we can brief you on this more later.
Okay, yeah. I don't want to get too far.
This agenda item isn't—just so—because for clarity, this agenda item is not for gas for them.
Right, right.
This is—but that's—because I think that was the core question, is how do they interact?
We have a—this will not impact—it is going to remove the capacity of the rest of the city by this item. This item is for the current demand in the system, and we're going to treat LG separately.
Okay.
And when that arrangement comes, we'll come back to council. We're still in negotiations, but we're trying to do something that will—it will not be included in this—these contracts.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's good for now. Keep on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, council, for Monday night? All right, well, we'll proceed with the agenda for this morning's meeting then. I do note that we've seen—I've had a few people join us since I announced at the beginning of this meeting that we will not be discussing our historic preservation ordinances today because we're going to have those first go to planning and zoning, and that was not able to happen this week. So if you're here for agenda items 2B or 2C, I'm sorry, those are going to be continued to a later council meeting. All right? I'm looking at you, Vic, when I say that. Got it? Okay. Thank you. We'll see you later.
He's not going anywhere. He's all here all day.
We'll see you later at the ribbon cutting for the post. All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 2A, is to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on an update for—to the proposed utility rate adjustments. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, council. Brian Richel, management and budget director. And with me, I have Chris Olby, who's a management and budget deputy director. So about a month ago, we came to council and presented the recommended, staff-recommended utility rate adjustments. Now, this is just a kind of a follow-up. We did the 60-day notice. So we're about halfway between. On November 20th, the proposed rates will be introduced, and then on the—on December 4th, council will be able to take action on those rates. But I just wanted to come up here and kind of do a brief, since we're halfway in between, a brief reminder of kind of what those rates are and some of the follow-up. Council had some follow-up questions that we wanted to clarify. So just a reminder of the financial principles, the five financial principles that we follow. And then the priorities of this year's rate recommendations. One of them is to—is conservation promotion. So one of the things is, as you're well aware, is the Colorado River system's still in a drought shortage. So what we're trying to do with these rate adjustments is incentivize conservation, especially with the outdoor landscape use. So that's one of the recommendations and the priorities. Also is a continued trend of non-residential water usage. So one of our principles is to—is the equity between residential and non-residential rates. And with this, as presented before, is non-residential customers represent just 10% of the accounts. However, they're using over 50% of the water. So we want to kind of make that the equal, and we recommend continuing towards the equity between residential and non-residential rates. And then a third priority is the small—smaller rate adjustments throughout the forecast period to minimize rate adjustment spikes. So as presented before, and you'll see later on, is that we try to do smoothing of our rate adjustments throughout the forecast. This helps out with any fluctuations within the year, and also it helps smooth it out and gives us a good sense of what the forecast is. Some municipalities wait and do adjustments every couple of years, and what that sometimes does is does—it prevents—or it does rate spikes, and we try to prevent from that. So our customers kind of know what is—what is going to be expected in the next couple of years. So the utility revenue and expenses, this spreadsheet is also in the council report. And this is just to remind council and customers that with the recommended rates, the annual rate adjustment revenue here is presented for solid waste, gas, and utilities is less than what the year-over-year increase in expenses are. So just a reminder that we are prudent and conservative in our rate adjustments. And just to kind of remind council that even the rate adjustments that are moving forward, the annualized revenue from those rate adjustments is still less than the year-over-year expenses for those utilities. And to give you kind of a sense—
Frankly, you're going to leave that slide.
Yes.
That—from a business perspective, it doesn't make sense, right? That we're—yes, I'm sorry, we're raising prices, but we're raising prices only, you know, partially because our prices have increased dramatically more than we're passing on to our customers. So we probably just ought to mention that the way we can accomplish that is our—is we're going to spend down our savings.
Right. That's correct, Mayor. And that's why I always hesitate isolating one year, because the way we work on budgets, especially in utilities, is we look at it over multiple years. And so we may have a year where you see this just unbalance what's coming in and what's going out. But over a period of—and part of you're right, the strategy is we—we're using a little bit of reserves, but we're also seeing out into the forecast that we'll be able to—we get closer to balancing and netting this out to zero, closer. So without dramatic—without going below our stated goals for the reserves. So this is what the snapshot is today, but when you look out over the five, six-year horizon, you'll see how we try to—it kind of balances out over time. But you're right, in this year, and a lot of things—I think a lot of it—well, obviously inflation's in there, but a lot of—sometimes it gets affected by the debt service payments and when they hit. And so we don't want to just raise rates just because of that in one year, and then the next year is completely different. Again, it goes to that smoothing of the rates. And this is a great example where we're keeping the rates pretty modest, even though for that year, it's—it's a negative net income sources coming in. But over a period of time, as we see how the payment of debt service looks like out our five or six years, it—it can fluctuate a little bit, and so we try to manage that over the five to six years. And our goal is, when we look at that fifth or sixth year, how close are we to our goals? And so that's—yeah, you're right. When you see it this year, you wouldn't want to—that wouldn't be the—a promotion of, hey, this is good business sense because you look like you're going to run out of money quickly. But it's—also goes to our ability to, like you say, draw down reserves and manage into the future, recognizing not every year will we see the same level of debt payments or capital. There's a lot of other factors that come into play, too, in the future.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Do we have in the original presentation—I would be interested—I think it is in the spreadsheets from the original presentation on the introduction—is a separation of the operating expenses and the debt service?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah.
We do.
Yeah, I will—I'll look at that.
Yeah, we—yeah, there was a little more detail in those first ones. You're absolutely right.
It's for infrastructure and how much is on rates.
Yeah, you'll see—and we're going to get to a slide that shows that, multi-year forecast, and you can see how that kind of balances out.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, so Mayor, council. The next slide shows—the previous slide was the numbers. This shows the inflation and cost increases by percentage, and we just pulled out some of the significant utility fund expenses. So for instance, water commodities, and this is year-over-year. So for the '21-'22 fiscal year, actuals '22-'23, and then what we budgeted for '23-'24. So this is basically year-over-year. So for instance, water commodity was a 20—almost 22% year-over-year increase in '21-'22. And now for fiscal year '23-'24, it's almost a 30% increase. And then if you go down to the—the plant chemicals, same—same difference. As you see, the percentages are relatively high year-over-year, and that is due to the inflation of the costs and being able to operate the—the plants and the utilities. And so—and then down below, just to give you a sense of what the residential rate able to operate the plants and the utilities. And so, and then down below, just to give you a sense of what the residential rate adjustments were year-over-year, so for instance, in water for '21, '22, we did a 2.5% adjustment and then a 2.75, and then now we're recommending a 3%, and then same with wastewater, a 3%, 4.25, and a 4.75. So those are kind of, just to give a sense of the percentages of the rate increases and the significant inflation that has happened the past couple of years. Now, all those numbers and percentages are included in this forecast. So just to show you the net sources and uses, and as previously, that was just discussed with the city manager, is that, yes, we do plan on drawing down some of our fund balance, and that's where the negative net sources and uses are in fiscal year '23, '24. However, as you go across, we start with the smoothing rate adjustments, we start coming to a positive, to where in '26, or '28, '29, we do have a positive net sources and uses. So yes, as previously, we, the revenues currently annualized may not be supporting all of the current expenses. However, as we look through the forecast and we smooth out the rate adjustments, that we do come out with a positive net sources and uses at the end of the forecast, and then come out with our 9%, which is within our financial policy. And just to remind council that the recommended rates are for the '23, '24. So those rates will be moving forward as part of the introduction. Now, the rest of the '24 and on, as you see they're italicized, that's just for planning purposes only. Just a reminder that every year we'll come back, and depending on how the financial situation is, if rate adjustments need to be up or down, and we'll present those on a year basis. But this is just as a planning purposes only for that forecast.
Ms. Spillsbury.
Can you just remind me, what is the percentage that we try to keep it, the range for the reserve balance?
So for the Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, for the financial policy that is adopted by council, it is in between 8 and 10%.
8 and 10, okay.
Of the final, of the fifth year.
When we get out to those years, close to those years, we'll make more adjustments to get them closer.
We typically have been much higher than that, though, right?
Well, oh, yeah, so the record is...
All the years prior, way higher than that.
Yeah, well, you can see even just, I guess, the end of this year, we'll be closer to 26%.
Yeah.
So that's typically, I think that's been kind of where we find...
So, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, in the previous, I believe in our previous presentation that we did on the 28th, we kind of showed a history of it. And yes, our history, going out to that fifth year, we may have, five years ago, thought it was 9%, but we're usually around the 25 to 30% once we get out there, because we do start making some adjustments and things do happen within the expenses and the revenues.
We're just very conservative in estimating what the expenses might be, and we're trying to be less conservative on the revenues.
Okay.
And so that means every position's filled, every project gets completed, you know, that's probably not going to be the case by the end of the year. And also, we were pretty modest in what we believe is the growth in the base of the accounts and what we're selling. And oftentimes, that is, grows at a faster pace than we expected. So the combination of those two ends up with a much stronger health balance. But in the forecasting model, it's very conservative all the way through. And that just helps us know, well, we can at least meet that goal, and then we can watch how things adjust as we move out.
Okay. And then also on this slide, I guess I'm a little bit confused, how come the commercial water usage is going down for the percentage? So from 5.5 to 5?
So, oh, the water commercial, that rate, yes. Last year, we did a 5.5% rate adjustment. This year, we felt that the 5% was sufficient for running the operations. And then, yes, the following year, just for planning, we bumped it up back to 5.5 and then 5.75 throughout. But we felt this year, we were able to, for the operations of the commercial, we were able to do a 5%.
Because we've been talking about how the commercial takes...
So I think there's, you're right. And there's other ways we've adjusted the red, the commercial. It's not here. What are the other ways we've made those adjustments?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury. So with that 5%, we also did an increase on the landscape for commercial at 7.5.
Okay.
So we're able to kind of lower the non-landscape, but increase the landscape to kind of offset that.
And we also adjusted the thresholds when someone triggers into...
That's residential.
Oh, it's just residential, not commercial? Okay, never mind. Okay. But we've...
Large commercial users increased for water?
Okay. So, yeah, we're trying, we are addressing that whole balance of the commercial.
We just have talked a lot about that, so then that's why it was confused, like, why would we lower that?
And a lot of that is in the outdoor use, right?
Yes, yes, the landscape.
The non-residential landscape is significantly increased.
We just don't see that number.
It's because that's just another...
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, these are the primary rates that we put on here. If we, if we had all of the rates that we did, this would be probably about three or four pages long of the adjustments. So we just put this, but yeah, sure, right. So we have more detailed of the other ones, like the commercial landscape, residential landscape, large commercial, things like that on a separate and part of the rate book. But these are kind of the majority ones.
Large commercial is 12%?
12%, yeah.
So that may be where, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, that helps it make more sense in my brain. So this is just the water, like indoor water usage for the commercial.
Greater number of accounts, and then we have some of these specialized.
Yes, okay, okay, thank you.
Along the lines of the ending reserve balance and the objective being at 10%, and then on slide two, we have a, on our financial principles, a 20% or higher. So I'm just trying to differentiate between the two goals.
So the financial principles are basically kind of what we tried to do for the following year. So we are at around 18.9% for the following year. We're, we're almost at that 20%. We'd like to be at that 20% and see how we can do throughout.
But not through the final year of the forecast.
Yes, then the policy...
But then next year, we're budgeting, we try to come back to council, so we'll get the closest 20% as possible.
Then the policy is the fifth year of the forecast that's adopted is, has to be in between 8 and 10%.
Okay, good point.
So, and then the next slide, what we have here is kind of a follow-up of some of the questions and that we, information that we got from council.
Yeah, so the energy and water resources both presented on adjustments to the utility service request fees. So we just wanted to follow up with a few examples of what those are. Overall, all these fees are one-time in nature, so it's basically a work order requested by a customer or a business. And then, once the work order's done, there's a charge, there's a fee associated with that, and it's done. So there's not, like, monthly recurring charges in here like there is for the other rates. But, so the top two are more common. So next day, service turn-on for electric or water is currently at $16. And then same day or after-hours service turn-on is an additional $45. Those are the current amounts. Those haven't been adjusted since 2010, so it's been a little more than 13 years since we've adjusted those. So the staff recommendation is to increase the next day charge to $20, and the same day or after-hours to $55, as we've seen costs to provide these services have increased over the last 13 years. And just to note, the same day or after-hours is more than a, you know, a next day turn-on because the schedules for the field workers is developed in advance so that, you know, the department can review how many orders they have and then efficiently allocate staff throughout the day. But if they get a call for a same day or after-hours, somebody's going to have to adjust their schedule, maybe work some overtime or something like that. So that's, that's why that same day or after-hours charge is more expensive. The next two are pretty uncommon or rare. So the third one there is a meter installation fee for a new connection to the city water system. So currently, that's $374. That hasn't been adjusted since 2009. It's been a little more than 14 years on that one. And so this would be if a, if a customer wanted to install, you know, a new meter on their property, or in a rare scenario, if someone still had a well or something and they wanted to connect to the city water system, they would have to pay for the installation of a meter. And the staff recommendation here is to move that, instead of a fixed dollar amount, to a quote from the department, because depending on where that meter would go and the time and staffing needed for each job, the recommendation here is that we move to a quote so staff can review the service request, you know, see how much it's going to cost, and then charge the customer accordingly. And then the last one is...
I'm sorry, before we leave that, is there still going to be a range? I mean, is it, if it is this extreme example you suggested...
The dilemma, if someone correct me, I'm assuming that you could have the water line the city's put in front of the customer, how far that line's going to go to get, where that meter's going to be set, how that's going to say. I think there's a lot of variables here, Chris. Is that maybe what's causing us to say, we'll give you a quote?
Right, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So this, it talks about the meter in the chart, but think about, it's really the service line. And by and large, the responsibility is on whoever owns that property to have their engineer design that, have their contractor build it. That's the way it works most of the time. But we could, sometimes we get a situation, we get a customer, usually residential, they're not very sophisticated at construction and design, and the water main might be across an arterial. So to have them try to engineer and get a contractor to trench across a busy arterial, we can step in and say, listen, we can, we can do it, but here's how much it's going to cost. It's going to cost us way more than, what is it, $375? So maybe it'll cost, you know, $3,700. But there's been cases, depending on the situation where the water main is, it could be up to $10,000. Now, it's probably going to be a better deal than a contractor, but really, the range of scenarios, it runs the gamut. So it's hard to give a range because it's hard to capture every scenario that could occur in the field.
Okay. It's just, yeah, I mean, the example, and it does not happen, I mean, most times when someone builds a home that's already included in this, this is somewhat thing where maybe it's like in a county island that comes into the city, and now we've got to get through the, right away in the infrastructure.
I've been here six years, and I think we've done maybe four of these. It's not, usually, the burden is really supposed to be on the developer to design and affect that connection.
Now, Chris, we could give them a quote, and then they could go get a quote from somebody else also. So it's not like this is the only option they have. So it kind of would allow them to say, okay, here's how much we would charge you if we did it. Now they could go and compare that with a contractor, maybe do the same thing.
Yeah, the important thing here, Mayor and Council, is the $375. You would get people that are sophisticated, that they're like, they're going to game us.
That's a great deal.
And they're going to be like, it would cost me 10 times or more for a contractor. So from my profit margin standpoint, I'm going to cut, I'm going to finagle the city to do it. And we would basically have to pull a crew from doing important maintenance or repairing water mains. Well, we wouldn't do it during a water main break, but we would have to divert resources, and it would cost us $2,000, $3,000. So we'd be losing money for this fee, so it just doesn't make sense anymore.
I understand, thank you.
It's just a quote, then we'll allow them to make the decision. We're not a man...
It's not a monopoly. They can go, if we're the best provider, the cheapest provider, they'll use us. If not, they'll go to the market. We have no profit built in. We look at our exact costs, manpower, equipment, trucks, all that, and that's the number we produce.
Thank you.
And for the last one, we wanted to highlight this one because this is the only new fee that's being recommended for this year. And it's a $362 expedited electric disconnect slash reconnect fee. So the thought behind this fee is to address, I think, two or three times, Energy Resources has seen or experienced contractor work that's gone on between the meter and the breaker. And so if there's any work beyond the breaker, like in somebody's house, you just use the breaker to turn the power off to operate safely. But between the meter and the breaker, if there's work that needs to be done in that service entry section, then service should really be completely disconnected to the house while there's work being done on that. So two or three times, the department recently has, has seen work that's been done in that area while there's electricity still flowing, and that creates a safety issue. So the reason this fee is so high compared to like the same day or the next day turn-on, turn-off, is because of that safety issue, they identify somebody in the field who kind of just drops everything and gets to that location as soon as possible to disconnect the service and make sure that the area is safe. So that's why that fee's higher than the first two. So that one is new, and we just wanted to highlight that.
Ms. Spillsbury.
So is it so high that it will discourage people from using it and just continue to do it unsafely?
No, I think, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, it's more of a cost recovery, and Tony can kind of talk to it, too. But it's not just the turn-off, it's having them to go back and turn it back on. So it's that back and forth of...
But it sounds like people weren't doing that when they should have.
That, yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Mayor, Council, Mayor Spillsbury, yes. So we came up with that fee as our best estimate of what the actual labor costs are of pulling staff off of the job that they're working on, getting them over there, the amount of time it takes, and then getting them back to what they're doing. So it's aimed as cost recovery, and I think the level that it's set at does reflect also the safety concern and our concern with making sure that our contractors aren't doing this.
Are there any fines for people who do it without doing it safely or anything? How are we discouraging?
They're shocking, but no.
Yeah, it's shocking, yeah, that was good. No, I, just like, yeah, how are we holding people accountable for making things safe in neighborhoods?
Sure. So it's maybe a bit of a gray area because they aren't actually working on our electric utility equipment. They're working on the customers' utility equipment. But our concern lies with, are they going to damage our equipment? And is there a safety situation present? So we have this fee. We also have a fee for afterwards to investigate what happened, because we're going to have to pull in our senior electrical engineers on it, possibly some of my time as well, and field staff. So in addition to this fee, we have a fee for that after-action investigation. So adding all that up, I think it's a fair cost recovery for what it actually takes to deal with these situations. It's not a penalty per se, but I think the level is somewhat punitive to discourage people from doing this.
Okay, thanks.
And so just to give a timeline of the next steps, so November 20th, as I mentioned, the utility rate adjustments will be introduced with the ordinance, and then on December 4th, city council will have the opportunity to take action on the utility rates. And after that action, if so approved, the rates will go effective February 1. And with that, that's the end of our presentation.
Great. Thank you, council. Mr. Summers, any questions on this item?
No questions, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, any additional discussion on this? All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, again, we're, to beat a dead horse, we're going to continue agenda items 2B and 2C till after planning and zoning and takes a look at them. Next item is item 2D, is to take action on board appointments. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. Second, Ms. Duff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 3 is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda then is item 4, that's current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Spillsbury?
A bunch of things. Okay, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to go speak at a woman in politics class at ASU. That was super fun and lots of engaged young adults in politics, which was fun to see and hear their questions. The Fuel of Dreams, I think a lot of us attended that, raising money for the Special Olympics. Good to see all of our police officers out there doing that. Last Friday, I got to go speak with all the third graders at Franklin Accelerated Academy talking about city government and city council. Love doing that. I'm guessing some people will mention some other things here. So Tuesday, Councilmember Heredia and I were at Dobson Library doing the Halloween candy and scared a few kids with my witch cackle, but it was a really fun...
She scared a few kids.
I, yeah, you, no, yes. Frankie didn't scare anyone.
Probably a few adults, too, if I...
I have a really good witch cackle that I'm very proud of, so... That was really fun, so I want to thank the library staff and police that were out there for that event. And then yesterday, I went over to Red Mountain High School. I don't know if anyone else went after I was there, but in partnership with Honeywell, sorry, just had a brain lapse there, Honeywell provided the funding for this incredible program that wouldn't happen without that funding. So they, it's the Student Spacefly Experiments Program, and they use kids through all elementary, junior high, high school, and then they have this big showcase at Red Mountain.[1783.41] And the last nine weeks, students have been working in teams to create an experiment, and three projects will be selected, and then they identify, the program identifies which one, and they'll help the team get it ready for, with the SpaceX engineers to become flight-ready. So it was just really fun to see so many kids there yesterday at all levels, coming together to make this project that's going to actually go into space. So it was really fun to see how that was all happening yesterday. So I wanted to thank Mesa Public Schools and Honeywell for that partnership. That's it for me.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next?
Last Friday, I spoke at the groundbreaking event for American Leadership Academy that is going in District 5. That was, I was honored to be asked to speak, and that was a great event. I also participated in the 10th Annual Red Mountain Mesa Community College Halloween Extravaganza, and that was a lot of fun, handing out candy, lots of good costumes. I did not have a witch cackle, but I had a witch hat on. It was pretty lame. I was not dressed up except for the witch hat. But I did that with city staff from Mesa Recycles, and that was a lot of fun, so. This weekend on Saturday is the cockpit close-up at Falcon Field, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. So the featured, we have featured pilots from the Civil Air Patrol Falcon Squadron 305, and I'll be out there. So looking forward to that, so come out to Falcon Field if you can. And then, of course, participating in game night. Have several parties to attend, neighborhoods to go to for, which is getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods. So that's on Saturday evening. I look forward to meeting a lot of new residents in District 5 during that, so.
Thank you.
Last week, I attended the Mesa International Film Festival, several events around that. It was hosted at ASU, and the Delta Marriott is growing stronger every year, and I'm very impressed with the quality of films coming forward and the events and the people that they bring together. Also, I attended the Fiesta Substation for Mesa Police Department. They had a Halloween drive-through. And so it gets more extravagant every year. There's cars lined up, I don't know, hundreds of cars lined up to go through a drive-through at the substation, and they have it all decorated on both sides and giving out candy and activity items and giveaways all through there. They really go all out, and it's very popular, and I was thrilled to stop in on that. On Tuesday, oh, and Republica and Panada was celebrating their 10th anniversary. They had a big mercado in music and entertainment on Saturday. I can't believe it's been 10 years. So on Tuesday, I took a tour of ASU Polytech, looking, going through their simulators and their flight program, their innovation labs, they're doing some incredible things. So it was good to have an update on that. Yesterday, I attended the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, which was addressing tree equity and how we can make it to our million trees by 2050. Do you know that that's like 35,000 trees per year for Mesa? Anyway, we got some work to do. I was doing some math yesterday.
How many a day do we need to do?
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah. I don't know, I did some math on that too, but anyway. So we'll be working hard as a city, trying to get as many tree planted, trees planted, and educating people the benefits of trees and cooling our city and getting in the places that need it most. This weekend, I want to mention, well, today we have our post ribbon-cutting in just in a couple of hours, and there will be a celebration as well this evening. And the Kansas City Barbecue Classic will be going on in that same space at the post over the weekend, starting Friday night through Saturday. It's supposed to be a big darn deal because, you know, if it's related to Kansas City, it must be a big, darn deal. And so it's a national competition. Some of us, the mayor and I, and a number of other people from the city, and some real official expert judges will be there. We're kind of the celebrity judges, I guess, they call us celebrity. But it'll be fun, and so Friday night and through Saturday, and it'll be right in the post and on the McDonald's. We'll be closed, and we'll be doing some celebrations there. And then, of course, Saturday is game, game night, and getting involved with our neighborhoods. Just getting active, Arizona, involved in neighborhoods. So I'm sure a lot of us will be out this Saturday, going to all the neighborhood parties and saying hello and thanking them for their involvement. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Spillsbury?
I forgot, yesterday morning, I missed the sustainability thing because I was at Lisk, Local Initiative Support Corporation, I think is what it's called, with Candace and some of our staff from housing and from downtown. And that was really nice in downtown Phoenix to just hear about things happening in that space. It's a nationwide nonprofit that helps build communities and helps with housing projects and stuff like that. So that was a neat thing. It was their first one they've had since before COVID, so that was a neat thing to attend.
Thank you. Mr. Summers, why don't you tell us about Monterey Park last Saturday?
Sure, Mayor, that was a fantastic event. Mesa has found a permanent location for the Mesa Express Library. We had the opportunity to cut the ribbon. Folks can have access to that library from their library card. You simply have to register that, and you scan it in, it'll open the door. You walk in, utilizes technology. So if you're looking for a little help, push a button on the computer, and one of the librarians from the main libraries will get online with you, and you'll have the ability to have that conversation with them about where that book might be located. In addition, the park expansion, cut the ribbon on that as well. It's four new ball fields, thanks to the Cubs' generous contribution to help make that happen. And I think the most excitement we heard was four more pickleball courts will be located there.
Thank you, yeah. Can't get enough pickleball.
Six, six. Apparently, I'm mathematically challenged this morning.
Whatever it was, it wasn't enough.
Six added to the 12 that we opened-
We did-
A few days before that.
I know we did eight at Ginatri.
Eight total, it was a reach, well, eight.
Oh, I mean, it was eight and four, oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah, anyway, more pickleball courts.
Good news for pickleballers, okay. Anything else, Council? I, it's been a busy time, so again, I know we're all, we've been running from one place to the other. It was, and Councilmember Duff, I'm sure, was there, but the Jim Bob Burger pop-up at, it was, again, another hit. Exactly.
You get to skip the line, man?
Well, I had to work for my, yes, I skipped a line, okay? But I, that's because I, I was a server.
Oh, you were a server.
Yes, I was, I actually had a staff badge, and I was delivering hamburgers to people's plates, or to people's tables. So worth takeaway for those who don't know, if there's anybody in the universe that does a pop-up at Halloween that is ridiculously successful, that people are lined around the block to go in and experience Jim Bob's burgers. But that was a lot of fun, to see that happen in downtown Mesa. Also, last Saturday, I was honored to give a welcome at the pow-wow event out at Riverview Park. This was a, what, a big deal, kind of big deal? I don't, I forget what Councilmember Duff called it. Big darn deal. I mean, Native American folks from all over the state were there. Great use of that park, and every square inch was covered with folks celebrating the pow-wow. Ms. Duff talked about the Mesa Film Fest. I was privileged to be part of a panel talking about Troy Kotzer and the film that he screened there about his father, who was a Mesa police chief. That was a great, again, appreciate our connection to Mr. Todd Kotzer and to his family. Yesterday, I was thrilled to be part of an event where Mercy Care granted $400,000 to Oakwood to help with a new Mesa facility, helping with Alzheimer's and dementia patients. That was, again, a big deal. Also a big deal yesterday, we launched our Together in Service initiative. This is, we're kind of rebranding our, the city's connection to the faith community, and it's a community-led effort, but the city is supporting, convening all of the faith-based organizations to help with human service issues and just to facilitate the good things that happen with supporting the faith community, addressing and ministering to the needs of our community. So look forward to Together in Service getting a lot of momentum. I'm also pleased today to be shadowed by Amir Hassan from Mesa Leadership. Amir, I hope we don't fall asleep today. I think we're gonna, it's gonna be, it should be a pretty busy day, so thanks for joining me. I know we're all going to convene later at the post. That's going to be an exciting event. Thank you again to Mr. Brady and our city staff for making that happen. And also, Mr. Brady, you'll probably talk about Turkey Tuesday, which is the annual turkey event.
Oh, you, wow, nothing, I didn't have that. Do you have the information on that?
I think it's on the 14th. November the 14th is our annual city government effort to raise turkeys for-
Well, you don't have to raise them, just bring the frozen ones.
Thank you. You're not raising turkeys. Might be a little late to start raising the turkeys. But go ahead, I think we ought to raise turkeys.
For next year.
Yeah, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Freeman has brought turkeys, for live turkeys, yeah. So if you have-
Yeah, we'll get more information out that, that's always a great turkey drive.
Right, turkey drive is a better way to say that.
And then, just because we're talking about it, just if people want to put on their calendar, November 20th is the Thanksgiving food distribution at the Mesa Convention Center through United Food Bank. And December 20th is the Christmas one. They're the same date, one's a Monday, one's a Wednesday, so.
Okay, so let's say that again, Julie, on the 20th?
November 20th is the food distribution for Thanksgiving, and then December 20th is the food distribution for Christmas.
And Julie, both those are at, still the conventions?
Yes, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. or until the food runs out. So the 14th is collecting the turkeys, and then the food distribution will be handed out.
Perfect.
So this is reminiscent of what happened during the pandemic, where literally you'll have a few thousand cars in the parking lot at the Mesa Convention Center on November the 20th and December the 20th. So if you know a family that would benefit from that, please help get the word out. Great, thank you. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we will have our council meeting on Monday, November 6. So we'll start at 5:15 for the study session, followed by the council meeting. You just mentioned the post grand opening today at 10:30, so very excited to introduce this fabulous facility to the community again. And just a reminder, we've covered Turkey Tuesday on November 14th, but we also have Saturday, November 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is the East Valley Veterans Parade in downtown Mesa, and that's always a great event, so invite everybody out for that.
Mr. Brady, on the post, we're having the ribbon-cutting at 10:30, but there's, is there an open house?
And then the staff, to really try to introduce the building to businesses and everyone downtown, so they could, if they can't come at 10:30, they can come later in the afternoon. So I think it's from 4:00 to 6:00, 4:00 to 7:00?
4:00 to 7:00.
4:00 to 7:00, they can come through.
So if you miss the ribbon-cutting, stop in, 4:00 to 7:00, and take a tour of the beautiful building facilities.
Great. This will be a great venue in downtown Mesa, and again, so I hope the community will come and kick the tires and look inside. This is kind of a vanilla-looking building that's been sitting downtown forever, and so it's kind of become invisible to a lot of people. But we hope you'll poke your head inside, and the next time you need a venue, I think you would really be well-advised to take a look at this. All right, Council, if there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.